We will start with our pledge of allegiance. Thank you all for being here. We're going to start tonight with our recognitions. We will start with Dr. Dawson, with our Tiger Paw.
Good evening. I am so excited to present Lucy Stein here from Tiger Paw. She is in Ms. Brooks' preschool classroom. Ms. Brooks was not able to be here, but she wanted me to let you know why she chose Lucy for respectful and responsible. So she said Lucy is always ready to help others. She always has what she needs to complete her work, and she is excited to jump in and get involved. Lucy encourages others to do their best and try again when they get upset, and she is always quick to tell us when someone needs help. She takes her job as line caboose very seriously and helps keep everyone around her safe as we get to our new location. She is Tiger Paw's Student of the Month.
That's a really tough act to follow, to be honest with you. With me tonight is 4th grader Mr. Ronan Bird and his teacher, Mrs. Mallory Witten. And so I've had the opportunity to know Ronan since he was in kindergarten. He and my daughter were in kindergarten and went in first grade together as well. So I've got the privilege of knowing him as a parent. Now I get to know him as a principal. And so he is a student who truly exemplifies each and every one of the portrait of the graduate words. But tonight, Mrs. Witten is gonna talk about how he is responsible and reliable.
Yeah, so Ronan is a lovely student to have in class. This week especially, we've been talking about how to be a problem solver and how as a problem solver, that's how you become responsible and reliable. And he's super quick to try his hardest and do everything he knows how to do to solve it, and then if he doesn't know, he asks for help. And I'm just super proud of him for how he is reliable to not only his teacher, but to his classmates and a great example to those around him.
Good evening. We are excited to celebrate Audrey Bartok. She is a 3rd grader in Ms. Kilcoin's class, and Ms. Kilcoin's here to share a few words.
Yes, it has been a privilege just having Audrey in my class this year. I have seen how she has been responsible and reliable with not only having her assignments, having them completed, but also too just helping others and actively participating in class while having a positive mindset about it. And so our related arts teachers have also not seen this also in their classrooms. And so she just sets up positive examples for those around her, and we are just so honored to have her as a Southie, and we're grateful to celebrate her today.
Hello. I am here to present Ms. Ella Montagno for East Elementary's Student of the Month. She is a 4th grader in Mrs. Strom's class. Unfortunately, Ms. Strom could not be here, but I have some very special words that she wrote. So Ella comes in every day with a positive attitude and a smile. The most beautiful smile, by the way. She's not showing you now, but... She shows maturity in her ability to be prepared, on task, and constantly doing the right thing. Ella learns from her mistakes with a good attitude and takes responsibility for her actions. If I need help with anything, she is a reliable student that I can count on to help me. Whether that be taking something to the office or helping another student, Ella is 100% dependable. She is a blessing to have in class. Congratulations, Ella.
Good evening. This is Parker Doak, and he is a 4th grade student in Mrs. Tomczek's class. And Mrs. Tomczek had the following to say about Parker. He is an awesome kid. He comes to school every day with a smile on his face and is ready to learn. He is responsible because he works hard and completes his work. He knows exactly what to do when he is finished with work and moves on to the next project without any reminders. Parker is also very responsible when it comes to the area around him. This is the part that is so dear to my heart. If he sees trash on the floor, he picks it up. If a water bottle spills, he gets right up to help clean it up. He is also very helpful to other students and will answer questions that they may have. Parker is the type of student that is a role model for others. Congrats, Parker.
Good evening. I'm excited to present Isaac Little as our Student of the Month for Ole Miss. He made a great impression on me a couple years ago on the soccer field, and he wasted no time at Ole Miss making a good impression on his team of teachers. And so masterminds are gonna give a quick word about Isaac.
Isaac is the kid that everyone can rely on.
In 5th grade, this looks like turning in quality work on time, remembering everything, routines, classroom duties, things like that, and helping classmates who are stuck.
We love that Isaac has a great quiet confidence about him. He has a good, strong sense of responsibility, and we know that we can always count on him. So, good job, Isaac.
Hello. This is Ellie Ennis. She is a 7th grader at the junior high, and she's on Team South America. In case you guys didn't know, our motto for a while has been "A World of Learning." That's why we're continents. So, fun fact for you. So let's turn it back to Ellie. So Mrs. Dalton wrote this blurb, and Mrs. Wilson, the English teacher, kind of added a little things. But this is what they say encompasses her for the word "responsible" and "reliable." She consistently stays on task, works hard, and demonstrates strong dedication to her learning. When absent, Ellie takes the initiative to communicate by email and ensures all makeup work is completed promptly. Her commitment and effort make her a great example of responsibility, especially to her peers.
I'd like to introduce to you Finley School's Portrait of a Graduate. This is Steven Krupstadt. Steven's superpower is he is able to mix and mingle with all possible groups and people that we have at Finley. It is a current rumor sort of going around the school that Steven is actually a robot. So much so that he was given the most likely to be an AI at the end of last school year. We thought that it was gonna be smooth sailing for Steven. He's been with us for a while and that he'd just walk off into the sunset. But last year, we had a scare that has turned him into more of an adult than he should have to be as a junior and senior in high school. When we discovered that, with his permission to share with you, he has Type 1 diabetes. And there was a scary moment for us last year, but the responsibility level that he's had to have to manage that and go into high school and be on track to graduate early has been quite impressive.
So tonight, I'm excited to recognize Alex Fletcher as OHS Portrait of a Graduate student for being reliable. When I read through what her teachers had to say about her through this process, one thing came out loud and clear, and that is you can always count on Alex. In fact, one teacher described her as the kind of student who goes above and beyond reliable. As the president of NHS and in chemistry class, she asks questions ahead of time, keeps things on track, and always gets her work done. That teacher even said, "If I were ever without a sub, Alex is the person I would trust to make sure everything ran smoothly." Others talked about how she consistently takes responsibility, not just for her own work, but for finding and fixing problems she sees. As an academy ambassador, her peers recognize her as someone they can turn to whenever they need help. Her leadership shows up everywhere on campus, from making sure assignments are done on time to keeping the front ensemble running smoothly and efficiently. Teachers describe her as organized, dependable, and someone who always gives her best. One teacher summed it up by saying that Alex could be recognized for any of these traits. She really does embody the ideal Ozark graduate. Alex, we're so proud of you and honored to recognize you as tonight's OHS Portrait of a Graduate.
All right, we'll be right back. Okay, next item on the agenda is informational items. We're going to have our Student Council. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. I'm Kayden Iron, Student Body President of Ozark High School. It's a privilege to stand before you tonight to speak on behalf of our Student Council, a team of young leaders who have committed themselves to building something greater than just events, posters, or pep rallies. We're here to foster a sense of belonging, school spirit, and student voice throughout Ozark High School. Before the summer school year began, we were already at work. From planning sessions and refining our goals over the summer to welcoming the class of 2029 at freshman orientation, we've been focused on creating a strong foundation for the year ahead. We kicked off the first day of school with chalk sidewalks covered in words of encouragement and excitement for our students and teachers. Our seniors gathered for a beautiful senior sunrise, and we brought the entire high school together for a welcome back pep assembly that reignited our sense of pride and unity. These moments weren't just fun, though. They were intentional. Every effort has been rooted in one purpose: to make sure every student feels seen, welcomed, and proud to be part of this school. And their energy doesn't stop there. Last Friday, we hosted an outdoor Fall Homecoming and Fall Sports Pep Assembly. It was unmatched with school pride, energy, and spirit. And this week, our whole district is participating in the Homecoming Spirit Days. It's a powerful reminder of what we can create when every corner of Ozark shows up. And of course, later in October, the Eagle Roast will return, one of Ozark High School's most beloved traditions, bringing students together for a night of laughter and fun. But while these events matter, our mission has started to grow deeper. This year, Student Council is evolving. We're moving from being just an event-based club to becoming a driving force for student voice, policy, and partnership. Our team is working to ensure that students aren't just represented in spirit, but in decisions, culture, and direction. We're going to expand our student voice project to gather honest, unfiltered feedback from our peers. This will help us garner the concerns and experiences of the student body and allow students to use their voices to create meaningful change. Then, with this feedback, we'll begin intentional conversations with administrators about campus policies and identify new ways for students to work alongside teachers and staff, not just to plan events, but to shape our shared learning environment. Because when students are truly heard, they invest more deeply, they care more fully, and they learn more boldly. None of this work happens without our incredible team. We're so grateful to our incredible advisors, Mrs. Little, Mrs. Sorley, and Mrs. Wright, whose guidance fuels every effort. We thank the teachers and administrators who cheer us on, challenge us, and believe in what student leadership can be. Thank you to this year's dedicated group of student leaders who fill the school with energy and pride. And we're especially thankful to you all, district board members and leaders, who believe and trusting students have something important to say. This year, our Student Council theme is simple: bigger, bolder, together. We're going bigger in our vision for what student leadership can accomplish. We're acting bolder in how we advocate, engage, and lead the school spirit, and we're doing it all together as one Ozark. Because when we are one Ozark, we are truly unlimited. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. We appreciate that. All right, next item on the agenda is our public comment, but we did not have anyone signed up, so we'll go on to reports. First is Superintendent Update.
I feel like we just met, and so I was trying to think, what can I give an update on? Like, I just wanna say thank you for taking a day, a week or two, a couple weeks ago, and really working on policies all day long. I sometimes go out to other schools and look at their agendas to just make sure that we're in line with everyone, or if there's something that I'm missing. And I've noticed on quite a few agendas that there were a lot of policies, and part of that is because of all the legislation that was passed at the end of June. So I know it was a lot of hard work, and I know we're going to hopefully approve them and get everything caught up, but I just wanna say thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, next we have district reports. Are there any questions on those or comments? We do appreciate them. We do read them. Thank you.
I'm very grateful to get those. I like those a lot. There was one that had a question on it. I'm sorry I did not print it out, so take me just a second to find it. Maybe it has to do with Roar. Was that in the curriculum one? I just wanted to ask, because we had talked about that as a board a couple of months ago, and then I think we should have maybe talked about it a couple of weeks ago, the Roar score, the new Roar score. We had talked about if that was gonna be a second grade, that the teachers had to keep track of two different grades, and exactly how that was gonna work and what all would be included in that, including late homework and things like that.
I thought, and maybe I didn't, did I send a different, I sent an email out explaining that?
Oh, I'm sorry if I missed that.
Yes. Now, I would have to go back and find the email and to read through it a little bit more.
Was that on, "Are they keeping the board informants?"
No, it was just in a weekly communication.
Okay, I, okay.
I do have Dr. Suter here, if you would like to hear something about that, but I did send a, I think, an update.
I just wondered how it turned out, since we had all discussed it so vigorously about how all those things went together. Thank you. I remember seeing something, I think, but there was something in my mind about we need to finish that conversation.
Yeah, so what was your specific question?
Thanks. Good question. Hi. I would have to find the email, but, or the part where I read it. It was either in one of the district reports or the email. We had talked before in June about the Roar score, if that would include, if that was behavior and living up to the standards and things. And we had talked about whether that would include homework being turned in on time, if that was in the Roar score, or if that was in the academic score.
It's in the academic score. So we have due dates and we have zeros if something's not turned in or if it's missing. So the Roar score, really the purpose of that is to let parents know actually, hey, your student might have a 50%, and if they also have a low Roar score, it's because they're not turning things in, not because they don't understand the content. Because, right, there's two different reasons why you could be failing, and so it's really just a tool for parents to know if a student's missing a responsibility point, that means they're not turning things in, so they're actually losing a point on their Roar score, and they're more than likely have a gradebook full of zeros, or 50s, or 90s, depending on that department, because each department has a different late policy.
It's good to have those standards spelled out of what to live up to. That's good.
Anything else?
Thank you. It was in there, so, thank, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Couple, couple points on the operations. So, let's see, for Tiger, for the Tiger Paw, I guess you could answer this, or Dr. Dawson. Looks like the north, the north playground's good, and then the south, is that almost good, almost done? Maybe pending, pending rain?
They were supposed to be here this week to pour rubber, it looks like it'll be next week before they do that, so then it'll take a 24 hour, or 48 hour drying time, so week and a half maybe?
Okay, and that's, and that's pretty much it for that?
That's, that is it, sir.
And then the, I know the baseball complex isn't work, I saw that.
We have programmed on that, and we are waiting for ONG for their report. Can you get it going up for me? And once that is, they'll start writing the dirt. If they took the top surface off, took out the fifth stamp, so we are moving forward.
And I saw the timeline in there, so, as far as the, I know this wasn't in there, and we just approved this, I think last week, or week before, the Tiger Stadium speaker system, is there a timeline for that?
Talking to Jim today, he hopes the equipment would be in late this week, and hopes to install it late next week would be the goal. So hopefully, the last couple, it will not be ready for homecoming. No, no.
It's Friday, so.
Hopefully, we did make some adjustments to the speakers last week, that did help with some of the sound, it wasn't going straight down at everybody. We angled the speakers up a little bit more to let the sound carry, to try to get it off our people right under the press box.
Thank you for that. Any other?
Thank you for the speed in which you're addressing these things, Richie, I do appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, we appreciate you. All right. Moving on, looking at future dates. You guys can look through those, there's a lot of them. And we also wanted to, Lori, you're gonna send us a doodle about a work study in October as well? October or November?
I think there'll be a town hall as well.
Oh, and a town hall. My gosh, let's just, we'll see you every day from now until Christmas.
That's why earlier when I said, I think I just saw everybody, I don't know what to report.
It's all right, it's good work, all right. I don't know, I don't remember. What was the October work study on? I can't remember.
I'm sorry.
What's the October work study over?
It's a, going over our CSET, going over results from last year. There's, I've got a whole list of things, we just have a work study on, and I'll send them to you.
Yeah, we typically have one, but then we took that separate day to do just policy, so that's why we're doing another one. I doubt it. I, I doubt it, because I think you're gonna want several hours. Just put out a couple of different dates, and we'll see what works for everyone. Okay. And next item on the list, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion, or are we ready to vote? Okay, all in favor? Okay, I don't, do we have Matt?
I think so, yes.
Look at the video.
We're going to vote.
Can you see me?
He's raising his hand.
He's frozen.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna count that as unanimous.
Yes, he's moving.
There we go.
Can you hear me? Can you, can you hear me?
Just give us a thumbs up. He's saying, can you hear me? No, we can't hear you, but there we go, we got it. So it passes unanimously. All right, next item, we have new business. Again, the first item on here, I have approval of MSTBA policies. I would accept a motion, we can accept, can we? Go ahead. Yes.
So one that is corrected on the, we corrected it just today, that I did not give you an update on, I missed it, it was KH, and on the backside of KH, let me find it. We were, oh, I think we added.
Public gifts to the schools, that one?
Well, oh, I've got the wrong one there. Yes, where it talks about literacy, and then we say that it, if there's a book that they want to donate, we say in accordance to our curriculum plan.
Oh, okay.
And that was added, and I wanted just to make sure that you knew that it wasn't on here when you saw, or when you reviewed it, but we have updated it and corrected it. But I tried to make sure that we got all other updates that we, you had discussed and you wanted to make, so I'm hoping that they're all on there, and if you see something that I missed, please let me know.
I didn't even, I mean, I looked through all of these. And I again wanted, well, my question was, can we approve all of these at once? Okay, so before we go, I'll accept, before we discuss, I'll accept a motion to approve all of these.
So moved.
I second.
Okay, motion by Dustin, second by Rayanne. I, I want to just thank everybody, I know it was a long day, but we went through every single one of these policies. I enjoy policy, but I know that I'm a weirdo, so I do appreciate you guys.
And I appreciate you guys entertaining that, all those discussions that needed to be had.
We had a lot of discussions, so.
So the public knows we spent solid six hours or more, just to try to, you know, alleviate you having to sit through as, as we do that, so we felt like that was a better use of everybody else's time as we worked our way through it. But there was considerable discussion and thought that went through all of it, just without dragging you through the mud.
But the public can see it, they can see everything that we're reviewed, and so there should not be any more discussions.
And I was gonna add that, those work sessions are open sessions, so anybody can come and attend those. And eventually, I would like to get to the point where I can bring before the board sometime that we start zooming those again. We might reconsider that, since we have new members on the board.
You're right, but we have already, I mean, if you want to bring that up, we'll need to discuss that at that time, but that's already been voted on.
Previously, right, but as I was saying, it'd just be something that we could consider doing, but I just want to make sure everybody knows you can come to those work sessions.
They are open. Anything open, the public is welcome to. But, is there any other discussion we can vote? All in favor? Okay, passes unanimously. The next item is the high school auditorium sound system.
I move that we hear this presentation so that we can accept that recommendation to update the high school auditorium sound system.
I know, that was a hard one, I didn't know if we were gonna vote.
We have to make the motion first, right before we hear the presentation.
Yeah. Okay. We are ready for you.
I would like to recommend the board-approved commercial audio systems, it's a vendor for the new high school auditorium system. We met on the 11th, we talked about it, I went back, created a committee, we had teachers, administrators, staff, and a public person involved in it. We took some things out, we added some things, I think you saw the price tag went up, about $5,800, that was at the request of our chorus teacher and drama teacher. So. It's, it's what we talked about during the work session.
So for those who weren't there, can you kind of just elaborate on what, this is for the high school auditorium, and what, what is this gonna allow us to do? I mean, we see a number there, but what does it mean in terms of everybody else?
I think the things I've heard, I've never been to play there, but I think during some of the plays, we had mics cutting in and out, these would be new cordless mics, these would be new speakers, this would be new control panels, you're basically getting a whole new system for our 20-year-old system in the auditorium. So it would be a revamp and make it as nice as anything we have.
Anyone who, and I've attended a couple, anyone who's been there, the sound system's been pretty challenging. It does take away from the experience and all of the hard work that the, that the students and the staff put in, and, you know, I think to everybody's credit, this was something we want to celebrate, how much work they put in, and time they put in, and, and to be able to hear it would be a, a key element to what they're doing, so thank you for the time they put in.
And it's utilized by multiple, I mean, this is an auditorium, it's used quite a bit. So I did have two questions. One, the lighting, is that, was that a separate thing?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
This will be a fund for, that will, we have $80,000 budgeted for that through the bond issue.
That's already, okay.
And we're working on that, we meet, what is today, we meet Wednesday to talk about trying to condense that budget.
Okay.
I know we're gonna take some of that money and start with the lights over the patrons. I think that's the most important thing, that we can turn lights on and turn lights off. We can always rent lights for our plays, I've talked to Claire about that, she's fine with that, but I think we have to get the house lights figured out first. So, we, we will be talking about that tomorrow, because I need, we need to get moving on that, so we're ready for November.
So if we approve this tonight, would the audio system be up and running by November?
We did have that conversation, the biggest part of that is the length it takes to build the speakers. Those will be customized speakers for that auditorium. What I told him is, we had to have sound checks early November, he did talk about if that was not ready, helping us with the temporary system for the play.
Oh, so, okay, well, at least there's a point.
You know, we're not gonna go in there without something ready to go, so they're willing to help us if it's not ready.
Okay. I think that's great, I appreciate it. Any other questions? All right. We can take, was the motion to approve it?
Do you hear the presentation so that we could approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay.
That's what mine was, was to approve it.
Okay, to approve the recommendation. So the first one you have listed is to approve hearing the presentation, and then you're having, this is Dustin and Rayanne are to approve it, is that correct? Is that what you have?
Yeah, the first one was, much easier presentation, so we can vote.
Okay, well, this is fine, this is to just approve it. Now, all in favor of approving this? Oh, passes unanimously. Thank you so much for that. Next item on the list is handbook revisions. I would entertain a motion to approve the revisions to the preschool, preschool, elementary, middle school, junior high, and high school handbooks as presented.
So moved.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Christina, second by James. Do we have any questions?
Thank you for, thank you for adjusting that.
I'm sorry, Dr. Sappington, and chambers are here if we have any questions, but is there any discussion or questions on these? We have also talked about these at length during our work study, so I think we're ready to vote. Okay. All in favor? Got the thumbs up from Matt, makes it unanimous. Okay, 2020, 2025, 26 budget amendments, I would entertain a motion to approve these as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Dustin, second by James. Do we have, Dr. Gray, do you have a presentation, or you guys have questions?
I would love for him to kind of explain that.
I didn't know if you would or not, but yes, we would love a little.
So federal money right now has been a very interesting topic in education, public education. So with a lot of uncertainty, it was very, very difficult to budget. I faced this in my previous district as well, and so I think it's very important, we want to make sure those numbers that are there are correct, as, as we get to know them throughout the year. It really helps those people like Dr. Carson, like Ms. Thurman, Dr. Higgins, to know what, you know, what they're dealing with, with those changes. So basically, we've got two areas that you would see, that we did budget amendment to revenue and expenditures, and the first I'll touch base on are title. So the, the good news is, we originally thought we were gonna be down about $230,000 in title, title revenue this year, and as you can see, if, if you open up that FY '26 title budget amendment to revenues, it's about more like $55,000. So that's, that's a good little change there, when you're expecting 230 and it's 55 instead. So we had to make those according changes, and the, the rest of that makeup of that 55 will be taken out of, of local funds, but that's a lot easier to do than 230,000.
Will you, oh, sorry. Will you explain which, were they all the title funds, will you explain which ones?
So like, so the two types of funds we're dealing with are title, which is federal title funds, and then the other one are CTE funds that I'll touch base on.
But these funds?
These are all title.
So will you tell which ones are, like, Title 1 is special ed, right?
Title 1 is for kind of at-risk, or at-risk educationally, so for reintroduced, based, I think, on your socioeconomic status as a district through the census, and Ms. Thurman can help me, Dr. Thurman can help me out if I'm, if I'm wrong. Title 3 saw a lot of cuts, and a lot of those cuts, title came through the Title 3 immigrant funds, a lot of those have been slashed, and we did see, as you can see, we saw some decreases there. And then the other part of Title 3 is to help our English language learners that are new, to, new to the area, may have trouble speaking English. And then Title 2A, I'm probably gonna have to turn that over to, to Dr. Thurman to help me out on that one.
Title 2 funds are the funds that we use for supplemental, so for some of our instructional coaches, math coaches, that's where that title money comes in, we use that for.
Thank you.
All right. Then if you'll go to the CTE. So our CTE budget, and this was a really tough one to budget with all the federal money up in the air, and we've actually received CTE enhancement 2.0 money, which is additional grant money that we did not know about at the time the budget was adopted. So I think it was kind of trying to throw, throw a dart and hope it landed right, but you'll see we've got about, I think, 28, 29,000 more dollars coming in revenue. And the CTE enhancement grant, that's a, that's a match grant, so anything below $1,000 that qualifies for the enhancement grant, the district, we pay it all upfront, and then we can get matched 50% from that money. And if it's equipment-based, we pay that upfront, and then we can get, we have to match 25%, we'd get 75% of that money back. And then also, if it's travel or PD-related, that's, we pay again, we pay upfront, and then we get 50% of that back reimbursed. But it's gonna, if you go to the next one, the CTE expenditures, you're gonna notice a big change in those expenditures, and just wanted to explain that. So, public education's a very expensive thing to do, and I think we've invested a lot of great money, especially in this building, that's directly related to CTE, and I think it's a great place for us to put our money. And that being said, I think, I'm not throwing anyone under the bus, but I think it was really hard for Dr. Hedgecourt to be able to know what that budget was gonna look like, just being very transparent, and I think he was doing the best he could with the information that he had at the time. But as Dr. Carson got those allocations in, and found out that we got that grant money, it's a lot more clear now, and so for me to be able to give those budgets and place those for Dr. Carson to know those allocations, it'll be very, very helpful for him and all of his CTE teachers. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor? Okay, passes unanimously. Next item. I'm sorry. Did there a presentation on that? Does there a presentation on this, or we just need to approve the contract?
You can approve the contract, but if you have questions, you can ask questions. Dr. Akins is here, if you have questions about it.
Okay.
Motion to approve the MINTA Academy.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Do you guys have any questions or discussion?
Would they like to explain what that is, or?
I mean, I could read it here for you.
Yeah.
MINTA Academy, just recently located in the southwest area. MINTA Academy is similar to the ARC at Ritten Dale, so they service students that have emotional or severe behavior needs. And so we are just asking that we develop a contract between Ozark School District and MINTA Academy to meet some student needs.
And we have one student that attends there?
We don't have a student currently that attends there. We have a student that transferred in that has similar needs that would be best met.
Okay.
So wouldn't, as I understand it, this theoretically reduces the cost compared to the other, the alternative, is that?
Yeah, they're all cost very differently across southwest Missouri. Ritten Dale does not have a opening currently. It's at a location that we feel like we could best service them through MINTA. It also has transportation, so that would be a supportive piece for our district, too, that they would keep a different student up and take them. It also does a great job about transferring students back to their home school, so they do have a program that works on putting students back into their home district, which is very important that we want to be, or the students to help already.
So, next one. All right. Thank you for that. Seeing no other discussion, all in favor? All right, passes unanimously. You know what that means.
Did you hear it before me?
We did. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
James and Sarah, all in favor? All right. Thank you guys for coming. Go home before eight.
And really, and seriously, we can't thank you enough for the day. Okay, thank you. That's why we get it done so well. It's great. I went out there with destiny, so they said, there is a lot of policies on there. They're going to be there till like 10 o'clock earlier. They had it broken down, like we did first reading, and another section on second reading, and another. We got our song done! Yay!